...buried underneath all the other stuff here. Yeah, general election certifications.
And under exhibits, can you just put a line through there? Because no, it's not change order slash library update. It should have been the certified copies of the election.
Oh. Oh, okay. I think I see what you're talking about.
Yeah. As you all know, any time that there is an election, the Lane County Elections Office must certify the election. And this is the, their certification certifying the election for the City of Oak Ridge and oh, and the three charter amendments that we have.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the certified November 2012 general election results from Lane County elections.
I said yes.
Move in second as then to accept the certification from Lane County of the Rayford Estates. Attorney Nun, offer vote.
Counselor Kordowski.
Aye.
Mayor Shory.
Aye.
Counselor Barclay.
Aye.
Counselor Callahan.
Aye.
Counselor Fortune.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Basler.
Aye.
Counselor Clark.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next motion, next thing. Now I can go sit down.
Now, let's see.
Now, on six point four.
We scratched it.
I thought you were going to move the discussion on the chapter thirty corrections to six point four.
You are correct there, and I say correct. That is correct.
Sometimes I am awake.
Six point four, that is correct. Chapter thirty discussion. It's on to you, Mayor.
Now, you probably don't have that. I threw this on at the last minute. Chapter thirty is an ordinance that governs the activities of the city council. There are some things in there that, this is just for discussion, we're not going to take any action on it tonight. One of the things in there that says, it says the mayor will vote, uh, will not vote. And that's really been up there for a long time. Charter was changed in 2010 to change, to change it or even before that. And another thing is roll call, uh, voting. So, this is just to get your, get your appetite, what it is to what changes we'll be looking at. But if you can get chapter thirty, we'll be sure we have that in your box for next meeting so that, so that you'll know what we're talking about. And something that just needs to be cleaned up and, I don't like to see one thing, say one thing, and something else say something else. So, it's just cleaning up that particular ordinance. Back on, one, one comment back, I won't even do it. I'll talk to you later. It's on the funding for the ambulance business. Alrighty, moving right along. Community services, seven point one fee waiver for the community buildings. Fee waiver number one.
Right, Your Honor, this fee waiver is being requested by Ms., Mrs. Teller, Karen Teller, and in regards to a Christmas potluck dinner that she has put on in the past, and she is asking for a fee waiver for the Greenwater Park Community Building. And that is for, well, the twenty fifth of December, so.
On Christmas dinner or Christmas?
Christmas dinner on Christmas Day.
Creative.
And Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the fee waiver for the use of the Greenwater Park Community Building for a community Christmas potluck dinner.
Motion. Vote by Counselor Clark, second by Counselor Basler, that we approve of the fee waivers for the community building for Christmas dinner. Any further discussion? Offer vote.
Counselor Asler.
Aye.
Counselor Barclay.
Aye.
Counselor Kordowski.
Aye.
Counselor Clark.
Aye.
Counselor Callahan.
Aye.
Counselor Fortune.
Aye.
Mayor Shory.
Aye.
Carries. Library update. You said we grassed that out, or was it just a change order we crossed out?
Well, no, no, we didn't grass anything out there, Your Honor.
Okay.
Um, one, basically, what we're trying to do is close out all the final change orders. And one of the issues that was brought forward to the council meeting a few ago was in the garage, the HVAC.
Didn't you put me on the agenda?
Yes.
You're there.
Yeah.
But I didn't put, I didn't jump you ahead of everyone else.
Oh.
You'll be after this one.
I thought that was for the community service.
So is this. Yeah, you are. You're in community service. You are seven point four.
Okay.
You want to get a screen, though.
I got you, I'm gonna get you there. Anyway, a couple meetings ago, at least, we talked about the HVAC units that are located on the northeast corner of the library. And our neighbor, Ms. Kelly, had concern with those HVAC units. And her belief is that they are too loud, okay, and, and that they're really close to a bedroom so that she's not able to, basically, sleep well because they're there, because they're too noisy, and also because of a smell. Myself, the mayor, and the police chief, today, we, we did some testing with those today. We jacked up the temperature in the libraries, we began going. So, we got both of them going. We had a dosimeter out there to check the decibels. And from about ten feet away, the average decibels on those were between sixty-six and seventy, okay, is what they were pushing. And that's both of them running at the same time, okay? And Ms. Kelly had stated in a previous meeting that the manufacturer said they run at about seventy-two, which is within tolerances, okay? So, the question to the council is this, and, and what we would, what we want to do with those. Here's your options. Option one, do nothing. Okay, that's your first option, okay? Option two is that we can go with minimal cost mitigation, which would be dampeners that go into the units, and you can go with a, a small wall with materials that help soundproofing. Thank you. Soundproofing on the wall, which is a minimal cost, okay? So, that's one of them, dampeners and soundproofing. Number three, we can move it approximately fifty feet down the east wall to the southeast corner of the library, which would be.
Southwest. General, southwest.
No, no, I'm talking southeast. I'll get to southwest in just a moment. So, the next option, number three, is you can move it to the southeast corner, which is by, pretty close to the generator in Mrs. Kelly's garage, okay? That's an option, because that option is about thirteen thousand, okay? Fourth option is you can move it to the southwest corner, which is the west side of the deck, so this side of the deck, right on the corner, okay? And that is about seventeen-four to do. The dampener and soundproofing are talking between two and thirty-five hundred, so two thousand and thirty-five hundred dollars, or less, it could be less, but that's the idea. So, those are the options that you have as a council, because what we have found is it is within manufacturing tolerances, okay? And the other piece is, of course, if we can bestow some goodwill here, then these are the options that you have, that you could.
Okay, I have a question.
Counselor Clark.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you check with the grant people, is there something that could be paid for out of that grant money?
Yes.
So, it would not be anything?
Yeah, and I apologize. I did get a confirmation from the la, from that last thing we're done, so yes, they would cover it.
Okay. I have a question here.
Yes.
Um, in the past, you brought us different figures. I mean, this seventeen-four seems double than what you first brought us. It was eight thousand.
Those eight to eleven, eight, yeah, those were just, those were just estimates before the, uh, before they took, took it from. That was an estimate, an initial estimate. It was closer to twelve. Eight, it was about, about twelve, between eight, eight and ten, eleven and twelve. Those were just estimates that they gave me. They had not costed out the whole piece at that time. They have now costed out the whole thing. So, I just got an email from the engineer, and he said it'd be about thirteen thousand if we just go to the corner, to the southeast corner. And bringing it all the way, because what you're doing is you're, is you're having to move the conduit, everything, the, the electrical, the, the copper tubing, you're having to move all of that approximately seventy-five feet if you take it all the way to the southwest corner.
Question.
Counselor Asler.
If any of this, does any of that already to work though, when you get done with it? Does he, does he post this to verit, you know, what we're doing? Is there, is anything at all that will make this thing work if you make changes on that way that's now? You know, if you went in there and moved a bunch of stuff and then she still says no?
Well, I mean, I mean, I believe that, that if we can post some goodwill, and I think even if you did, option two, okay, with minimal mitigation, dampeners and the wall, we're making a good faith effort to try and assist, okay? And, and I think, and I think that that's reasonable, is that we do make a good faith effort to try and assist. But seventeen-four to me is high, okay? I mean, it may be grant money, but it's money that everyone paid taxes and those kind of things before we got it. So, it's still, you know, to me, that's high.
Counselor Barclay.
Next, lady, Counselor Fortune.
Counselor Fortune.
What, what effect of them in the quarter on the other end going to have to do with the efficiency of the unit as far as their building goes?
I can't answer that specifically. Generally, what the engineer told me was that if they move it too far, then the pump or the compressor, I think is the correct term, they would have to put a larger compressor so that it would operate at the same level as where it sits now. So, he called it a pump, but I believe the proper term is a compressor. So, it would need a larger compressor at this end if, if that one wasn't sufficient.
Is that, so, does it follow the vent process and blower than seventeen-four?
Yes.
By compressor, you mean a bigger unit?
No. You can change the compress, excuse me, I'll be recognized. You can change the compressors on those units. All you're doing is increasing the capability of that unit to push the flood further, which is your heating and cooling flood.
Thank you.
Larger compressor, more pressure, and of course, there's.
Counselor Barclay.
Does the police chief, or you, or quite frankly, anybody, what is the OSHA standard on, on, at what point noise becomes a health issue as far as here in Austin and that sort of things? Anybody know that?
It's anything over eighty decibels.
Yeah.
And you're at sixty-two.
It was sixty, sixty-six to seventy is what we were.
So, at this point, you are under that threshold already. The dampener, whether it's surrounding it, maybe some louver to where it's going to take and deflect the, the sound waves or whatever, it's going to further dampen it. So, you're, you're below the standard now, and even something as simple and more cost-effective as dampener is going to reduce that further and be further below that threshold.
That's correct.
I know, one of my properties, I've got a compressor directly outside a bedroom window, and I've never had any problems with anybody sleeping in that bedroom, because the newer ones and the technology, they're pretty quiet. And the smell was probably the initial burn-in smell, is what you're getting.
Right. We didn't smell anything today when we're running both.
It's like, it's like a baseboard heater after sitting up all, all summer. It smells when you first light it up.
Right.
Question?
Question?
Yeah.
If I can inject some information here on this, you take a sound barrier wall, I would suggest a concrete hole to start with, and then you line that with wood, which you incorporate your sound barrier into that. Because concrete block won't do it.
Sure. It'll reflect it.
Right. You can reduce the dBs of the decibel zone that by, I would say, from fifteen to twenty-five percent with a single wall across there.
Sure.
Now, that's my past experience that I've had, and I've got fifty-five years in it.
You could even put like, like, like a styrofoam foam insulation.
Foam is not a good sound barrier.
Or some, some material that absorbs the sound instead of.
Depends on the density of it.
Rubberized material, some.
Rubberized is not the best. The best that you can put in, if you can waterproof it, would be rock wool. That's the very best sound, because we have low density for anything to go through, so it's dead right there at that point.
These pill mumpers out of it.
Pardon?
These pill mumpers out of it.
Right.
What about wood?
Wood, if it's not attached directly at every point on the concrete wall, wood is a good sound.
Just wood by itself.
It would radiate the sound through on that. So, what you do is you build your wall, you build a standard wall on the inside of it, attach just enough to support it soundly, and then you insulate that entirely.
What I'm thinking is, is one of the concerns of the property owner was the encroachment on her shrubs and so forth. Why can there, it's right now kind of a ratty-looking wire fence, or why couldn't you build a fence? It'd look better for both parties, and, and then we could do whatever it takes.
Well, Your Honor, a fan said it's not attached to the library, that's, that'll be ours. That'll be out of pocket. So, as long as we build something which is attached in some fashion to the library, then it's, it would be covered.
There's one other thing that you have to take into consideration also. Even though those two units are sitting out separately, individually, by themselves, that you build a wall there, you have to watch what your airflow is among units, because they certainly have a tremendous amount of airflow through there, and that's where she's getting a lot of the noise.
Because it pulls again from the side exhaust at the time.
Right.
Ms. Kelly?
I don't know if I should speak at this point. I'm trying to just listen, but, um, if you want me to, I will.
At your end, you're going to speak.
Kind of reiterate. When I first spoke about, when the library was first proposed, and the five-foot setback was proposed as opposed to ten, I spoke to the city staff about that. And I was actually given plans that showed the HVACs in the back of the unit, which I felt, in the south part of the building, which I felt was, you know, looking after my interest. Um, I think that's important to know, that plan was in place. The second thing is that I spoke to the engineer before those units were put in without my concerns, and they were never addressed at that time. They were just simply put in, because I really feel bad that there's extra spent on this. There's another issue that hasn't, that I don't know, hasn't really been addressed, and that's the safety issue. We, I don't know if I can explain this so well, but there is only six-inch clearance between my shrubbery and your units. That does two things. It makes it a fire hazard, and the second thing it does is it makes your units run much harder and could eventually blow out the compressors. So, basically, to install those, the way the manufacturer says, you need five and a half feet, and you only have five. I'm wondering how we could put a wall in there with that. So, I think that, you know, my perspective is, the question was asked, will I be satisfied? Well, if they were put somewhere near the original plan, that would work. Which would be the southwest side.
Most likely, they, they would, but nowadays, they're all pretty quiet. We just got to drive beside these and talk, just like we're talking now, so it's not very, very much noise there. The, the second desirable, if we moved them at all, the least desirable was to move them to the southwest corner. That's the most expensive, the worst place to put them. And the next best place, and we measured it out, is about fifty feet from where they are right now, down the side of the library to the southeast corner, generator shed.
At, at the shed or before the shed or after the shed?
Before the shed. Yeah, it'd be faster place, actually. It'd be right near that garage that's there.
That's the workshop, yeah.
Or whatever it is.
Yeah.
What was the cost of that?
That I'd like to. That was thirteen.
That was about thirteen thousand.
About thirteen.
Knock off about, well, it was about thirty percent less than.
Yeah, twenty-five to thirty percent.
I'm, I'm not so sure that would really kind of, I, I don't know, it's very hard to say.
Yes.
I don't know if you're aware, but from Monday, about ten o'clock in the morning until Wednesday, about twelve noon, those units run twenty-four hours, nonstop, and didn't recycle at all.
Um, they weren't running today when we were out there.
No, they stopped when, they stopped on Wednesday.
Because they're thermostat controlled, so whatever the thermostat says they should do, that, that's usually what they turn on or off. Done?
Forty-eight hours worth of, of ten minutes.
I just remember noticing them look, looking like they're very, pretty much consuming what, what would be a sidewalk if they weren't there. Is there any required passageway, like, as far as city codes and stuff go? You know, that there needs to be a certain width allowed for people to walk through that area, or?
There's no requirement for a sidewalk. There is a requirement for a setback, five-foot setback, the property one.
So, if you moved it down by the, where the generator is, it wouldn't be blocking anything that's.
Yeah, there, there's really no reason to have a sidewalk on that side, because there's nothing you can do with it. You got a sidewalk on the other, on this side of the building. The other side, there's no doors or windows or anything.
Okay.
Basically, you'd be increasing the, the size of the setback by the shifting units to the south.
Setback might be the same, but the distance from the corners would be a little different. Okay, are we going to drum on this more, or?
Obviously, I don't know. I have seen, I've seen where the units are now, but I don't know what it would look like with them to be up against the.
It would look almost identical, but they would be on the southeast corner, on this corner, the other side where the generator's at. So, basically, would be very similar paths.
In front of the generator?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be right at the corner.
Between those working on the longer place and the other side.
And, and where that sits, it, it's approximately two to three feet south of, south of Ms. Kelly's workshop, so. She has a, a yellow workshop at that end. And as I said earlier, I, I think that we're working towards in good faith and with some goodwill here, okay? I can tell you that in some communities, this would even be discussed, okay? This would be, oh, well, okay, as long as it's within code, okay? However's, we're not that type of community, so.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Big, I'd like to have a request, Mr. Biggestat.
Mr. Biggestat. You know, I was, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, would you be interested in like a PTAC unit to put in your bedroom window? There's both a heater and an air conditioner, it would probably cost us about six hundred bucks, and it would pretty much dampen most of the noise coming through, plus you'd have a heater and air conditioner.
I personally don't like noise. I moved to a small community, get rid of industrial noise and things like that. I don't use them. I'm kind of naturalist, but, um, you know, I did a lot to see that these things were in the right spot, you know, initially, and I don't know why they were moved. And where they are, they're just not safe. I mean, I don't know what else to say.
I'm a little curious when you say, excuse me, when you say that the things were put in according to plans.
Mm-hmm.
You said there was another set of plans that you saw?
I, I went to the staff and asked them.
Oh, so you asked somebody.
I, I went to Tina Rose Gordon Zimmerman, and I asked them what, how it was going to be situated, okay? I was told that the, those, the plans I have should, and I believe you have a copy of those, should have been forwarded to you, because I gave those to Mr. Gomez.
They got it.
Okay.
I can, I can tell you this, that that didn't come to the council as a change order, and that they've been a change from the original plans to what they are now, the council would have seen that in advance, I believe, because we never saw any kind of.
Right. And I don't know also where that happened, but I do know, you know, what I was told. And based on that, I, you know, thought everything was taken care of. If I'd known those units were going to be there, I would have probably said something at that time, you know?
Was those maybe with the old library?
Yeah, what, what, what Ms. Kelly got was a set of, the alternate plans.
Well, I was thought they were the final plan.
It's alternate plan C. So, it was an alternate. It was not, it was not a primary plan, and when the plans were presented, they were presented with the HVAC units in the northeast corner, okay? The, the, yes, so, however, she is correct. There were, there is an alternate plan B, and there's an alternate plan C. So, that, that is correct. However, the primary plans have them in that location.
When I was looking at that today, it's not just a matter of moving the units. It's a matter of all the wiring, all of the, all of the stuff on the walls, the switches and everything are right there. All that has to be moved, including the ductwork, has to be moved as well. So, it's not like just moving the units. It's a little more complicated than that, and that's why it costs thirteen thousand.
Well, and the, the difference, I mean, if you're looking at, and I agree, just because we have a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, it's not a mandate to spend eight-hundred-thousand in Kingston somewhere. But between the relocating options, the difference between, to me, the twenty-thirteen-thousand and the seventeen-thousand figure, that seventeen-thousand figure is more expensive, but you've also got to make a ninety-degree bend to tie into the, into the existing ductwork, so the, which has, has got to affect the efficiency, whereas putting it on the southeast corner, you still got, you know, it's a longer shot than it's a straight shot. If you were going to, I mean, the seventeen-thousand is probably the worst option for cost and.
Mr. Biggestat.
Well, thirteen thousand, seventeen thousand, because they're going to completely revamp this heating system. I mean, they can't add fifty feet or thirty-five feet to, to the pipe to it. I mean, it was, it was definitely a plan that, that never should have wanted the protection, because, I mean, they're just wanting a whole new plan and starting from scratch. That's not so much.
I agree. And the reason I, once you start fiddling around with those heating systems, once you got one in, installed and already approved, you start messing with them, you got a very good chance of, of having a heating system that maybe have some issues later on down the road. Yeah.
And I, I have a concern. I mean, we're sitting here discussing it, we're trying to, we're trying to make it better for Ms. Kelly, Ms. Kelly. But even when we're discussing it, she says, well, I'm not so sure that's going to work either. So, it's kind of hard for us to make a decision here when we're trying to do what we feel is better for her, but if we spend this thirteen thousand and move it down here, and she says, well, I'm not so sure that's going to work either, we've spent the thirteen thousand and we're still back at square one. So, it makes it hard to make a decision.
Counselor Clark, I think we need to look at it, and this is just me, from a point of reasonableness, okay? What's reasonable, what's reasonable on the part of this city to try and, and from a goodwill and a good faith effort? So, that's, I think, from, from one perspective, you got to look at it. What's, what is reasonable for us to try and assist with this?
Well, and, and, heard Ms. Kelly say on a couple of occasions, it's a safety issue, barring any evidence of something unsafe, because all your electrical, all your insulation, it's, it's all inspected, it's the code, does it pose a hazard of fires? Probably a lot less than a Christmas tree or wood stove or what. I mean, the, the safety issue at hand is hearing loss, if anything, and you're already below the decibel level that would cause that, so there's no safety issue from that standpoint.